The Monday, May 13th, 2019 meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now in order. If you please join the commission in standing and repeating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
This is called a pregnant pause. There we are.
Here.
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 Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes, here. Commissioners, we will need a motion to excuse Commissioner Campana. Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move that we excuse Commissioner Campana as he is on vacation and out of town.
Is there a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Commissioner Reynolds, any comment?
None.
Commissioner Smith, none. Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all commissioners in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 By no, no. Hearing none, motion passes six to zero. That brings us to the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Schlegel, I think you want a motion approval.
Can I do that to make some comments when we get to the consent agenda approval?
Yes, do that separately then.
Okay.
Correct.
I'd make the motion to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Mr. Schlegel, any comment?
None, thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
No comment.
Any other commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed by no. Hearing none, motion passes six to zero. That brings us down to announcements. We do have a number of vacancies on city boards and committees, particularly arts and culture. We have two openings, the Board of Zoning Appeals has three, Board of Review two, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority two, Harbor Advisory Committee one, Housing Commission one, Investment Advisory Board two, Local Development Finance Authority two, Local Officers Compensation Commission one, Marquette County Transit Authority one, Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee three, and the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee one. I encourage all citizens to consider becoming a member of one of these boards or committees. You really do an invaluable aid to the city by doing so. We value your input, we value what you suggest, and we value heavily the work that you do. The applications are available on the city website, so this can all be done now online. But again, please consider it. That brings us down to boards and committees. Item number one would be welcoming a new member, and that will be Todd Lee of the Harbor Advisory Committee. Todd, if you could meet me up at the podium?
Thank you very much for stepping up and joining the Harbor Committee and being part of the solution to the city, if you will, of helping, if not in this case to push the wagon, raise the sales. In recognition of that, I do have an official City of Marquette pin to give you, and I am told that it really does have superhuman powers. So please use it very, very wisely. Thank you again.
Item number two is... Oh, we have to finish the presentation. I get the easy part, the clerk has the hard part.
Do I need to speak into that? Okay. Okay. I, Todd Lee, do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Marquette, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the City, of the Harbor Advisory Committee as a representative of the Harbor Advisory Committee of the City of Marquette, according to the best of my ability.
Now we can move to item number two, which is appointments, particularly Yorma Lankinen to the Marquette County Solid Waste Authority, or Management Authority, for the remainder of a term expiring on 7/01/19, and for the subsequent term expiring 7/01/22, and Brian Varney to the Board of Review for an unexpired term ending 2/01/22. Commissioners, your pleasure. Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve these appointments as listed.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second to motion.
Commissioner Smith, comments?
Thank you for your willingness to serve, and I saw Yorma in there, and I don't know if Brian's in the audience, if he can wave his hand? He's not. He's not here, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schlegel?
I'll echo this sentiment, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Seeing none, commissioners, all those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, any opposed by no. Hearing none, motion passes six to zero. We have a number of reappointments as item number three, and that is for Kane Beauchamp to the Harbor Advisory Committee for a term ending 06/01/22, Yorma Lankinen for the Housing Commission for a term ending 06/09/22, Daniel Hakala to the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for a term ending 05/30-22, and for Terry Elders, Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for a term ending 05/30 of 22. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we reappoint these committee members as listed.
Mr. Schlegel, I think?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, further comments?
Thank you to these folks who's for serving, continuing to serve, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel?
Just real quick, a couple of these committees about six months ago were almost, you know, down to like two or three people, and I just am really excited to see how many people are stepping up and filling these positions, and, you know, being a part of the process, this is just exciting public service. So thanks for your effort and time and everything that comes with it, because it is, it's a commitment, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners' comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed by no. Hearing none, motion passes six to zero. That brings us down to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Is there anyone desiring to make public comments? Sir, please come to the podium in the front.
Hi, everybody. I'm Peter McDaniel, living in Los Angeles, currently, I'm the owner of Coaster Two, which is your city's flagship. I'm hoping to continue that relationship. I've been emailing with John Swanson's office, working through that. We're trying to have a presentation for you tonight, but boats being boats, things fell behind. I've been painting furiously for days. But anyway, the plan is, my family's gonna move, we're moving on to the boat, and we're gonna take a world tour with it, so we would like to carry your flag and maybe do a blog, sending back to the city, meet up with other cities, maybe do like a flag swapping thing, just simple stuff. This would be sort of fun way to, fun way to use the boat, and might be good for the city, and together we have a good time with it. So anyway, next meeting, hopefully we'll have something together, and no more official. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the city? The city, anyone, any other public comments?
Frank Chavero, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. These comments demonstrate my sincere love for our city. It's a great privilege to live here. If I didn't prefer Marquette and our people, I would live elsewhere. Marquette is well worth fighting for. Those four sentences belong on our April 29th record in the time illegally taken from me. A breach of due public process occurred, as I mentioned, Mr. Frazier's misuse of a famed family member to justify his misstatements of April 8th. A review of Mr. Stonehouse's interruption revealed no possible violation on my part, which explains why he refused to consult our attorney when I asked him to. The attorney had been urged to speak up under this exact scenario. Mr. Stonehouse neglected to consult him because he'd done so previously, and clearly did not like the response. He'll recall the attorney saying per se that the tenets of free speech allow us to speak as we please, less any foul language or vulgarities. In fact, we can even lie, he said, which I disagree with. No one should be allowed to purposely lie on either side of the dais. As this board's heard many times, if my comments are found to be generally wrong, I'll quit appearing. Years have passed, and no one successfully refuted the validity of these comments. This is even more unlikely after April 29th, when several new commentators spoke out against this board's madness. A woman asked if the Parcel Two design fit in with the neighborhood. More views will be blocked, she said. A man doesn't like the direction we're going. A woman said Peter White once said, "Everyone on Champion will have a view of the lake. We're selling off who we are and what this place is." She quoted from a meeting that the view from Champion will not be changed. Another woman is tired of five and seven to zero votes, that their minds are made up ahead of time. A man said Founders was a done deal. The commission has a reputation for it. The public outreach is deplorable. A woman said we need more opportunity for the public to learn, to know more about the project, end quotes. Amazing how so many unrelated people feel the same. I thank them from the bottom of my heart. Although none referred to me directly, the gist of their concerns suggested that Frank's been right all along. The look of chagrin on Mr. Stonehouse's face was unmistakable as they bashed this commission. While it might not be illegal for Mr. Stonehouse to interrupt, it was illegal for him to talk over my time, thus not give me the full three minutes, even when reminded. This when he'd let a woman speak beyond her time earlier. Based on what our attorney told us on February 25th, it's alleged Mr. Stonehouse's conduct of April 29th violated the Open Meetings Act, as well as the U.S. and Michigan constitutions that we witnessed him taking a sworn oath to uphold. He continues not to handle us all equally, which bolsters my argument about the extreme arrogance we're being subjected to.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
David Allen, 805 North Front Street. Just want to announce, the League Women Voters will be holding a candidate forum here in this room on, let me make sure I got the right date, July 17th, from 6:30 to 8:30, and that will be for the people running for commission in the August 6th primary election. And we will also, as usual, have the vote 4011.org up online, so you can see answers to candidates, answers to questions and things like that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Yorma Lankinen, 8 Market Drive, here in the city of Marquette. I feel very safe today, all the police officers in the background, I can have my back to the audience and not worried about anything. But anyways, I want to thank you for reappointment and appointing me on the Housing Commission and reappointment, or appointment on the Landfill Authority. I'm the chair on the Housing Commission, and it's been a couple, three years since I've been on the Landfill Authority, so it's been, it'll be nice to get back on there and see what's happening. So again, thank you for the appointments, and good luck with everything.
Anyone else?
Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. First, I feel obligated to come on up and say thank you for putting at least asphalt in on the rainy days for Lincoln Ave. I don't know if it's because I was asking for it, or if because the commissioners were, but it does help. There's so many other roads, though, in the city that could also use that same treatment, Wright Street in particular. So I come up to you, though, sorry, I'm a little winded. I got something, I gotta go catch a rocket launch at seven here, so not gonna be able to stick around, but I want to explain something as, when, when I came up at the special meeting and asked about the road funding, and we're taking money away from certain roads and putting them into the Lake Shore Drive, I was, I was coming up here as a procedural thing. Not that I didn't like the road, I liked the road, I want the road, I want everything that we're about to do, but I want us to treat this as a procedural, we need to take out a loan, we need to take out a bond, whatever the names you want to do, but stop treating the road projects, and no offense, Mr. Schlegel, but you made a point of some of these projects that we're putting on hold have been on hold since you were on the planning commission, and no offense, but... Yeah, but, you know, it's been a while since you've been on this commission. So in the sense, are we treating road projects as a bank account for future road projects? Because it seems like a pattern that we get into, we get into an effort of, oh wait, there's something that came up that we didn't know about, or there's something that we want to move this over to here. We have a routine that goes into place of, you approve a project for Pine Ave, and then something comes up, and we need to take the money from Pine Ave and put it towards something else. I am, I'm skeptical in using this word, and I really hate it when people do, so please, trust me when I say I don't want to make this public. Are you lying to us when you say we're going to fix College Ave, or we're going to fix Pine Ave, or we're going, or Pine Street, or we're going to fix these road projects? Because it seems like a shell game that says, here, this is a project that we need money for, but yet we've got this other project that comes up, so we're gonna take the money from that project and put it over here, and it's been a couple of years, but we don't really have any plans to put that money back into that road project. This is a pattern that has come up, and I mean this in a sense of, it's a, I witness patterns. I don't care who you are, this is what the commission has been doing for the last couple of years, and I'm wondering, when are we going to get roads improved and fixed, like you promised? Thank you.
Anyone else to address the commission? If not, the first public comment session is closed. That brings us to our next item, which is a presentation, in this case, Superior Hockey, Marquette. Do you want to shepherd them in? This is the Marquette Junior Wildcat Boys 12U Tier Two Division Hockey Team, the 2019 Michigan Amateur Hockey Association State Champs. Once they all get in, I'll explain what all that means, because there's a lot to it. Send the team right up front. Yes, Scott. Come on. Oh, I got the good guys here. We got all of them. It's not often I have to stand up to get over somebody here, but let me explain. This is the Marquette Junior Hockey Program, and it's very proud of its, this year's 12U AA Hockey Team. Marquette Junior Hockey adopted the USA Hockey American Development Model approximately seven years ago, and this age group represents the first group which, which went all the way through the program, which focuses on high intensity, high repetition, skill-based practices. This year also features the rebranding of Marquette Junior Hockey to Junior Wildcats. This year was exceptional, with the team finishing the season with an overall record of 52 wins, three losses, and five ties. Yeah. The hockey season included regular season Northern International Hockey League Championship with a 15-0-1 record, runner-up to the league tournament, as well as winning championships in the Midland Regional Silver Sticks Tournament, the Green Bay Tundra Tussle Tournament, and the Traverse City Tournament. Team went undefeated in district, in the district tournament held in Marquette, and the state tournament held in Frazier, Michigan, where they finished the state tournament by shutting out their opponents 4-0 in the semifinal, and 7-0 in the final. This was the first state championship at the U-12 AA level, that means under 12, since 1993 for Marquette Junior Hockey. And tonight, we are recognizing the Marquette Junior Wildcats Superior Hockey Team as the 2019 Michigan Amateur Hockey Association 12U AA State Champions. Give them a round of applause. Is there any reason that Marquette is Hockeyville? You're looking at it. Is the coach here? Please. We have some things for you. We have the Marquette Certificate of Achievement presented to junior hockey, particularly to this particular team, and we have signed certificates for each of your players, again, from the city of Marquette, in recognition of their accomplishment. Thank you very much for what you bring to Marquette, to the values that you're giving these young citizens, and just to everything. It is a terrific opportunity to have them here, have people look at them, see them, understand them a little bit, and all I can say is keep the puck on the ice, right, guys? Thank you. Chief Rebal, the next presentation is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's a tough act to follow. We have a few tundra tussles ourselves, but usually they're on Washington Street, so bear with us. First, I'd like to acknowledge the men and women of the Marquette Police Department that are here tonight to receive this presentation. At this point, I'd like to invite them all up here to be a part of this with me, so if everybody could come up here, please? As everybody's coming up, I'd just like to let everybody know here that this has been a two-year journey for our department. Our accreditation managers, Ryan Grim and Lieutenant Mark Worrie, have been working with staff over the last two years to retrieve, achieve the accreditation status, and after two years, this is the culmination of everybody's efforts. Whether they participated directly or indirectly, every member of our department have participated in this process. So that's why I want them to be up here, because this is their award. This is what they've worked hard to get to after two years. So with that, I'd like to introduce the Executive Director of the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, Bob Stevenson. He is the retired police chief for the city of Lebonia. And then I'd also like to introduce Neil Rosso, the Director of Professional Development for the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, and he is a retired chief from the city of Flat Rock, and also retired from the city of Port Huron Police Department. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for that introduction. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, commissioners, city officials. As the chief said, my name is Robert Stevenson, currently the Executive Director with the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, and we come here tonight representing the some 1,200 members of our association to make the presentation of certificate of accreditation to the Marquette Police Department. One of the major goals of our association is to raise the delivery of police service and the professionalism of the police profession around the state, and certainly that has been done here in the city of Marquette. It's sometimes hard to recognize excellence when you're surrounded by it, but the city of Marquette already had a excellent reputation, it has just been enhanced. To give you a little bit of flavor about the significance and how hard this accomplishment is, in the state of Michigan, there's some 600 police departments. Of those 600 police departments, 401 of them are municipal police departments. Out of those 401 municipal police departments, this is the first police department in the upper peninsula to achieve accreditation, and only the 16th total police department in the state of Michigan to attain accreditation. Or to put it another way, your department has attained what 97% of the other departments in the state of Michigan have not attained at this point in time. It's a significant accomplishment, and I said when we first got here that we were going to make a presentation, and I use that word "presentation" because we do not give this award out, you earn this award. And Neil Rosso is our program director for accreditation, and I'm gonna turn the microphone over to him to give you a little deeper explanation of just this accomplishment.
It's truly an honor for me to be here, for me to tell you in three or four minutes that the task that your police agency went through to reach accreditation is kind of minimizing the fact of what they did. Although before I even start to talk about law enforcement accreditation, the success of this endeavor by this agency, and how well they did, is reflected by the fact that all the people are here. I don't think anyone was ordered here, although I don't work here. And your camera is putting about 10 pounds on me, I can see that right now. You're all somewhat familiar with hospital accreditation and school accreditation, and we wouldn't want to be treated in a hospital that wasn't accredited, or we wouldn't send our children to schools that aren't accredited. Law enforcement accreditation has some similarities with that. We have 105 standards that are state and national best practices. The commission was created in 2016, so the fact that your, your police department has got to this level in that short amount of time is pretty amazing. I also need to thank your police chief, Chief Rebal, was kind of voluntold and asked to be part of our commission. He's one of the 11 commissioners that run our whole program, so as soon as he came on board, we started to urge him to enter. So there's 105 standards, they had to take their policies or procedures, written directives, whatever you call them. They needed to weave that through those standards, and then it's called self-analysis, that's a task in itself, and then two police executives from outside the area, and from Marquette, I mean way outside the area, had to come up here and evaluate your agency. Your agency had to prove that the written directives followed the standards, and they had to prove that they were following their written directives, and they had to prove that to outsiders, so, and they're not done. In a year, they have to send me an annual report, the year after that, and three years we'll be back up here and hopefully be delivering another one. So they've done an incredible job. I was a police officer a long time, and got to do some pretty neat things, but for me, as a retired police officer, to come to your community and tell you what a wonderful police department you have, is truly an honor for me. Thank you.
So with that, Chief, if you would step up here for representation for your department?
No, I want you to sit up there.
Yeah, we said this was going to be easy, and it wasn't. So with that, to all who see the certificate, know that the Marquette Police Department, having voluntarily complied with the standards established by the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, deemed essential for the delivery of professional police services and the protection of their community, is hereby awarded this certificate of accreditation effective of this date, 7th day of February in the year 2019, and for a term of three years. Gentlemen, congratulations.
I just wanted to take a quick second to thank everybody that was here again tonight and to Bob and Neil for making the long trip up here, because it was obviously a trip, but it is a true honor to have achieved this status, and we look forward to continuing to develop and provide the best service that we can to our community. On a side note, I would like to take a quick moment to acknowledge a couple pending retirements. Yvonne Bonzell, over 30 years with the Marquette Police Department. Come on up here. And Detective Captain Mike Kohler. Both will be retiring this summer, moving on to different venues, but I want to thank them publicly for their service for the city of Marquette. Mike, over 26 years. Like I said, Yvonne, over 30 years. They are going to be truly missed. They did a great job serving the city of Marquette, so we wish them the best in their future, and thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, thank you. Let him do that. Our next presentation is in the agenda as item number six. That's the Carp River Kiln Project. Carol Fulcher, the administrator for the Iron Ore Heritage Recreation Authority, will be presenting.
Tired contractor, because he never retires. He's been instrumental in the building of this trail. We could not have done it without him. So thank you. So I just wanted to update you on what's happening. Last year, we signed a memorandum of understanding with the city to take the remains of the Carp River Kiln that collapsed in 2016, resurrected on a piece of city property. So we're going forward with that project. So just a little background on what we are, the Iron Ore Heritage Trail. We build, manage, and maintain that 47-mile trail across the Marquette Iron Range, and one of the best things we like to do is interpret what happened along that trail, interpret the sites and stories, and we've done that through 62 unique stories along the trail and on our trailheads. We have 62 mile markers that have been sponsored by people from the community. We have six art installations, and one of our philosophies is the trail is great, but we really like to have a place for people to hang out. Someone's called the trail like a sidewalk. It's a place to meet your neighbors, and we want a place that is a destination place where people can learn and see each other. So the Carp River Kiln is going to be... We want to place it within what's called the Gateway Plaza, so what we would do is feature the restored Carp River Kiln. We would surround it with walkways, some landscaping, of course, benches for people to sit at, interpretive signs, so you actually know what that thing is and what it was for. We would like to use artwork, lighting, and we've actually found a kiln door that was out in Forestville that sat on the ground for probably 100 and something years. We've cleaned it up, and that will be the donor wall for those people that help us restore this kiln. So it's very cool. Some of the photos we found while we were researching this project is, yes, there used to be three of these kilns along the highway. This is the making of the wastewater treatment plant. It went down to two at one point. The city of Marquette's Beautification Committee did some remodeling of it and added the sign and some fencing. Then it went down to one, and then in 2016, after a heavy wet spring snowstorm, we lost the last one. So we want to build it along a property the city owns, and we want to place it along the heritage trail, of course. So this is right north of the mouth of the Carp River, and we chose this one because, of course, it's on the heritage trail. It's actually within the footprint of where the Carp River furnace was. It's accessible via a parking lot just south of the bridge. It's really unusable land right now. It's a slumped piece of property that no one's using, and it won't obscure or obstruct any views of people who live along Lake Street, that they will not lose their view of the water. I promise that. So here's a little gateway or artist rendition, and everybody knows that this is just a rendering. It's probably not going to look like this, but it's fairly close to what we'd like to do. And then that's what the property looks like right now. This is what the old site looked like, so the furnace was right on the water where we're putting the kiln. There used to be 43 kilns on that site. There used to be barns, housing, a pig iron yard, a dam. So it was a big industrial complex where we made pig iron back from 1874 to 1907. So it's a big part of our story that we want to tell. So we always do interpretive signage. We make things to last. We build things out of steel, iron, so we try to make things that are non-destructible and that are going to be there for a long time. So one of the signs, the interpretive signs we want to do is actually on the furnace itself. And like I said, my husband, who's grown up in Marquette, said I didn't even know what it was. I went by there every day, had no idea. I just saw this, you know, beehive-shaped sandstone piece of architecture. So we want to tell people what it is. It made charcoal. You burned hardwood into charcoal. The charcoal went into the blast furnace. It heated the iron ore that we had here with some flux material. It melted it down, and it was put into these molds that looked like little pigs. So that's pig iron. So I know more than I ever thought I would. And then the other sign that we want to do is actually about John Burt, who, the more we research him, he's a phenomenal figure in Marquette's past. He actually was the first owner of the Carp River furnace, but he was also instrumental in the Sulocks. He was the owner of the first newspaper. He owned the sandstone quarry. He owned mines, and he was also the son of William Austin Burt, who first discovered the modern-day discovery of iron ore in 1844. So he was a surveyor. So he's a man that probably worked 24 hours a day, I guess, to do all that he did, but we really wanted to pay homage to him. This is the kiln door that we found. So we have it at UP Fab right now. They cleaned off the moss and the rust and powder-coated it, and like I said, we can put that there, and as we go through this fundraising process, we can put people's names on this door. We call it the fundraising door or whatever. So it's kind of cool that we're going to use... We always try to remain true to the iron ore heritage story. So just to give you some quick timelines on what we're doing, so spring, we're raising funds. We also want to go through the public process of the site plan review. We're working with Sanders and Chapsky right now to develop that, and then hopefully, we can get going on prepping the site and getting going on it. Bay 8th through June 21st is our fundraising through what's called the MEDC Public Spaces, Community Places. We've been awarding a matching grant, so if we crowdfund $25,000 by June 21st, they'll match that $25,000, so we're bringing money into the community to put some people to work and make a better place for us. Summer to fall, we want to hire the people to do the masonry, the artists, they install the benches, the landscaping. Actually, Lake Superior Watership Partnership has already said that they will give us the labor for the landscaping. And then in the fall, we want to finish it all up, hopefully before the snow falls. We want to cut the ribbon on this project and have a new place for people, a new destination place along the trail. So what we've done so far is we have raised some money. We've gotten $15,000 through the Shyrus Foundation. We've gotten $15,000 through the Michigan Council for the Arts and Cultural Affairs. We are putting in money ourselves, the Iron Ore Heritage Recreation Authority, and then, of course, we want to raise that $25,000 through the MEDC Public Spaces. So this is my last pitch here for the money. You can reach us through patinoctity.com/carpkiln, or you can go through our website, ironoreheritage.com, and you'll see a button that says Carp Kiln. And there's really a lot more about the project and why we're doing it, but with that, I will open it up to questions.
Mr. Frazier?
Any chance Donnie can install that door for you? Once he gets finished, Donnie can put that on for you. I mean, he was probably... He was friends with the guy you mentioned. He was best friends with him, so there's no reason Donnie couldn't do that. You know, if you don't get them for snow flies, I think Donnie knows a little bit of something about grooming the area for snow, so maybe Donnie can help with that, too.
Anyone else to question? Commissioner Schlegel?
I just want to say that this is a fabulous project. Following you on Facebook and things along those lines as far as the Iron Ore Heritage Trail, I would ask you to keep pounding that social media component, especially for this fundraising component. I don't think you'll have any problem with it, and it's just an absolute perfect complement to everything else that you guys have done over the years. I remember several years ago when you guys were going around and pitching just for the first phase of the Iron Ore Heritage Trail, and I thought, they've got a long trail ahead of them, and you're there, you know? And you keep going and you keep bringing great attractions to this, you know, amenity that we have access to, so just...
Anyone else to question, Carol? City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a comment, and I want to thank Kurt Goodman, who salvaged this beehive kiln when it collapsed. Back in 2016, I'd just become the city manager at the end of '15, and Kurt took it upon himself to contact MDOT, because at the time, it was on MDOT right away. MDOT wanted nothing to do with it, so he picked it up, I don't know how, but picked it up and carried it and stored it behind the wastewater treatment plant until we reached out to the Iron Ore Heritage Trail people and asked them to consider this project. And I don't know if it would still be sitting there or where it would be today if Kurt hadn't have done that, so, but thanks, Kurt. Appreciate it.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner?
I just want to time in, because I do think this is so special, and I know I'm not going to say anything different, but thank you to Kurt. Thank you to everyone over the years who supported the Iron Ore Heritage Trail. When I lived downstate, this trail is famous throughout Michigan for the length and the breadth of the history and all the destinations on it, and I was on the board of the Michigan Trails and Greenways Alliance in 2010, 2011, and we heard about the things that we were working on up here and what a terrific project it is, and it is really exciting to see it just keep growing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let me just say thank you. This is a project that needed to be done. When that kiln went down, we lost a lot of our history. We lost a really nice little component, and for you to come in and working with the city be able to resurrect that, especially into what's planned, is just incredible. And it's going to be a nice gateway to that part of the city coming in from the south and just really say, hey, we're in Marquette. There's a little bit about that good, solid iron ore history. So thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you for all your support, and just one little thing. We just were notified that we are in the inaugural class of the Pure Michigan Trail, so there's only two in the UP, and we made it, so we thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This brings us to item number seven, which is a public hearing, and this will be for the demolition of buildings. It's ordinance 678. Reminder to myself and all of the commission is that this will be a roll-call vote when time comes. City clerk, if you can read the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. City administration has determined that it's in the interest of the city to adopt an ordinance clarifying the process for building demolition in the city. Attached is the proposed demolition of buildings ordinance, number 678. The city commission scheduled this public hearing at the April 29, 2019, regular meeting. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation: Following the public hearing, adopt demolition of buildings ordinance, number 678. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
I declare the public hearing on ordinance 678 to be open. Anyone wishing to address the commission on this ordinance? Anyone wishing to address the commission on this ordinance?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I have one request to the ordinance, that it include a mandatory notice to the media when any demolition takes place within the city of Marquette. The mandatory notice doesn't have to be a siren or anything, but just an advance notice to the people of the city of Marquette that demolition will be taking place on a certain date between certain hours. And I say this because there are certain people and animals who are very sensitive to the sights, sounds, and smells of demolition, and that if people have advanced notice, they can remove themselves from the area for the amount of time it takes. And I appreciate this is a little bit extra burden upon the party demolishing the property, but I think it's a part of the good neighbor policy. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else willing, or wishing, rather, to address on this ordinance? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to adopt demolition of buildings ordinance, number 678.
Excuse me a second. Would be Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Frazier, any comments?
Just help with organizing, cleaning up all buildings, and getting new buildings.
Mayor Pro Tem?
The only thing is just to thank our city attorney, Ron, for working on this. It was important to the future of things that might come down in Marquette, and I'm glad that we have... We'll have this ordinance now.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Hill?
I noticed there might be fees associated with the permits of this. I wondered if there was anything else to know about that part? If that's in the first section, demolition to comply with existing codes permit required? Is that... That's going to be on a case-by-case basis?
If we do apply a fee, it will come through the budget process. We'll have to add it to our fee schedule.
Okay. And then is there... I guess I don't... What does this help us, protect us from? Is there anything, just a sort of overview of what this was going to help us? There was something obviously missing.
Well, as the agenda supplement indicates, the administration asked that we put this ordinance together, and so that's what we did. Whenever a large... I think this is aimed primarily at large buildings, and we just wanted to have it all in one place. Certainly, when you do a large-scale demolition, there's going to be state requirements and federal requirements, but we wanted to have some local control, and that's really the purpose of the ordinance, is the local control over the process.
Was this modeled on any other statutes in anywhere else?
Well, we looked at a number of demolition ordinances. I mean, we always look at what's around.
Yeah, because I wondered, the things that I wondered about were there's the question of sort of broadly, the idea of returning it to the site to a condition of being developable or being buildable, I guess? I don't know what the right term would be, and I wondered if that was something we wanted to put in that, or is that a separate idea? Living... I've lived in communities where there were a lot of demolition happening, and so how things are left at the end, this... What I saw was a lot of... There's cleanup, as mentioned, very broadly, of remove all debris and equipment, dispose of all material as above required, leave the ground clear of all materials, rubbish or debris. leave the ground clear of all materials, rubbish, or debris. Does that, so that's the legal standard for making sure that then the land would be left in a way that it could be developed or built upon? Just want to confirm that.
Well, I think that's what it indicates, but I would just add, you know, we're talking about demolition of private property. You know, they can do whatever they want with their property. I mean, they don't have to sell it. They don't have to develop it, but it has to be left, as we say, clear of all materials, rubbish, and debris, and put in a nice, you know, so it's, you know, presentable piece of property. But there's no obligation that they do anything with it. We can't make them do anything with it.
Well, as I said, I've lived in communities where there were lots of properties that had been abandoned and not taken care of, and so, not to suggest that these folks would do that, but over time, land that's been, where there had been structures and they're no longer structures, it can be an unfortunate incident where things are left and the land's not taken care of. So, it's a particular concern of mine. And just understanding what the different sections of this ordinance would, I mean, I had a chance to read it, but here's a chance to talk about it in the, with the public so that the public can understand a little bit more about what we're requiring folks to do. Because even worse than vacant site is the site with an abandoned building, and that's a real, can be a real problem in a community, and so to, a really significant problem to a community. So, I'm glad that we're doing this, and I just am trying to make sure that folks understand that we're putting in place controls that will allow it to be land that we can hopefully soon bring back into community use.
I would just add that, of course, this is, this is for demolition of buildings that private parties want to demo their own properties. If you get into abandoned buildings, we've got ordinances that deal with those situations as well, where we can enforce those to come down.
Okay. So, there's a difference between, so this is when an owner is intentionally demolish, doing a demolition as opposed to...
Correct, correct.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Frazier?
I guess it'll be helpful with the two power plants being closed and with demolition on the horizon possibly of them. You know, we don't know when they're going to do it, but possibly demolition on the horizon. And we've learned from different cities that there's companies out there that come in, like the hospital hired a company to do all their moving for them, that specialize in that. We've learned that there are companies out there that specialize in taking all the buildings and removing all, they take all the rent risks, clean up everything. Did you ask Commissioner Hill about, to clean up it? They clean up everything, take down the building, move all the waste, and then give it back, take, sell it back to the owner or something, do something. They've got some way of doing that. Here are companies that specialize as to do it for them, and there's been many buildings, hotels, been taken down. This probably goes back to, my dad told me back in the day, the coast guard know building, like a foghorn or something back then, and they just blew it up. They said, they're sick of it. They just blew it up one day.
Yeah.
But I was like, what the heck was that noise? They looked at one, just a little boom, when building was gone. So, it probably goes back to those days. So, I think it'd be good for having the stuff in progress for, you know, when the two buildings eventually come down and site gets cleaned up and make sure everything, and then the brownfield will probably take over from there. So, I think it's good.
Any other commissioners? Time for vote. Are you happy with that? Clerk, please do the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. The vote passes six to zero. Brings us down to item number eight, which is our consent agenda. And if I can have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second, Commissioner, or excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Second.
Any further comments, Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of, lot of juicy stuff on the consent agenda this week, and I'd just like to point out a couple of them. The proclamation about Arbor Day and Public Works Recognition Week. The, the way UP Music Festival event permit that's been applied for, that's going to be a great event that's going to be held, if I'm not mistaken, in Lakeview Arena. So, that is a great use for that facility. And then, something that's kind of probably under the radar for a lot of people, but the new land development code software that's being purchased by the city is going to enable the process for the homeowners or the business owners to access their property and then see how things are zoned and all of these different intricate pieces of the puzzle that go along with the process of getting any kind of project from point A to point Z accomplished. And it's going to, it's just one of these things that's, it's an amazing tool that I look forward to kind of exploring once we get it in place, but being aware of that it was on the horizon, this is something I think that's going to lessen the workload and hopefully on our, on our staff, and make things that much more accessible and understandable for our, our citizens out there. So, this is, it's, it's long overdue. I'm really excited about it, and I'd like to commend staff for bringing it onboard. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thanks for pointing those out. Commissioner Schlegel, I have nothing further to add.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, all those commissioners in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes six to zero. That brings us down to item number nine, which is the Marquette Area Women's Roller Derby League Lease Agreement. Clerk, if you would please read the background.
Thank you, sir. Background, the Marquette Area Women's Roller Derby League has requested the city commission consider leasing storage space at Lakeview Arena for storage of equipment and supplies used for practices and votes. Staff has worked with the city attorney and the Marquette Area Women's Roller Derby League to draft a standard lease agreement, which provides the terms and conditions of the request. Storage space is rented at $6 per square foot, making the monthly payment for this lease $50. The term of lease is May 1, 2019 to April 30, 2020. The proposed lease agreement was introduced at the commission's April 29, 2019 meeting, and approved as recommended to move lease agreement forward to the May 13, 2019 meeting. Fiscal effect, the Lakeview Arena fund will receive $600 with the approval. Recommendation, approve the lease agreement with Marquette Area Women's Roller Derby League for storage space at Lakeview Arena and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, your pleasure. Commissioner, or excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move that we approve the lease agreement with the Marquette Area Women's Roller Derby League for storage space at Lakeview Arena and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd second the motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, any further comments?
None.
Commissioner Schlegel, any comments?
Nope, I'm all set.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Frazier?
All female members of the commission are welcome to join up and help out with the, with the derby, and I've also volunteered Johnson's may attempts to be a tackling dummy for him.
Any other commissioner comments? All those supporting the agenda item, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero.
Six to zero.
Six to zero, my correction. Brings us down to the new business, item number 10, which is my travel reimbursement, and I think we'll begin that off by having the clerk read the, read the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, Mayor Fred Stonehouse attended a Michigan Port Collaborative and Economic Impact Forum in Lansing, Michigan, April 18, 2019. The following check will be reimbursed for his travel expenses, travel expenses incurred. Mayor Stonehouse, check number 992221, $154.77. Fiscal effect, total travel costs are $154.77. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2019 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve travel reimbursement for Mayor Stonehouse in an amount of $154.77 for the Michigan Port Collaborative Economic Impact Forum. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioner, or Mayor Pro Tem?
I move that we approve the travel reimbursement for Mayor Stonehouse in the amount of $154.77 for the Michigan Port Collaborative Economic Impact Forum.
Commissioner Hill?
Second.
Commissioner, or Mayor Pro Tem, any comments?
Just thanks for attending on our behalf, Mayor. I'm glad that you got to go there, and I'm sure that you learned a lot, being somebody that knows a lot about ports and the economic impact involved with them and cities.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
Agreed. Thank you.
Any other comments from a commissioner? Seeing none, and I will abstain from this vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Motion passes five to zero. One abstention. That brings us down to item 11. Clerk, if you would please read the, read the background.
Thank you, sir. Background, earlier this year, Customs House LLC filed a lawsuit against the city of Marquette. Customs House is claiming that their property is subject to multiple easements, and that the city has made unauthorized improvements upon one of the easements, including curbing, paving, and visual upgrades. Customs House claims that the city negligently constructed a multi-use path above grade of the first floor sill and the, and the door threshold of Customs House. The lawsuit is being defended by council hired by the Michigan Municipal Liability and Property Pool, which provides general liability coverage to the city. However, as there are allegations in the complaint which are not covered, the pool has advised the city that it may wish to retain separate counsel to monitor and advise of those exposures that are not covered and may not be covered. For these reasons, the city manager recommends that the city attorney be authorized to file an appearance as co-counsel on behalf of the city in this lawsuit. Fiscal effect, none as recommendation, recommended action is within the city attorney retainer agreement. Recommendation, authorize the city attorney to file, file an appearance as co-counsel on behalf of the city of Marquette in this lawsuit. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Before I ask for a motion, city attorney, do you have any comments to make regarding this?
The complaint against the city has seven counts to it. Some of those counts, the entire lawsuit is being defended by the insurance provided by MML. That's not a problem. But it has seven counts in it, and some of those counts, if the plaintiff would prevail on those counts, there wouldn't be coverage under our policy for various reasons. And it's pretty standard for insurance companies to send reservation of rights letters, and they also always, when they do that, they invite the, the policyholder to retain separate counsel, to act as co-counsel with respect to those counts, if that's, if they're interested. Here, we're in a situation where it's within our retainer anyway. We're glad to appear, although it's being well defended. I'm not worried about that. But there are some claims that there wouldn't be coverage for if, if they prevailed. And so, it's as simple as that.
Okay. I've opened the door a little bit. Commissioners, any, any questions you would have of the attorney?
Is there a schedule for the court dates?
The litigation has been, like I said, ongoing since maybe earlier in the year, and recently, there was an amended complaint, and since that time, there was a scheduling conference. I've been given copies of a lot of the pleadings by the lawyer who represents the law firm that represents the city of Marquette, and so I know that there was a recent scheduling conference, and I believe this case will eventually end up in mediation and probably in August. So, that's my guess.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, commissioners, what is your pleasure? Mr. Frazier?
I make a motion to authorize the city attorney to file an appearance as co-counsel on behalf of the city of Marquette in its lawsuit.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith?
Second. Second.
Commissioner Frazier, any comments?
Ron's up to, good work again, doing nice work for him.
Commissioner Smith?
No comment.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes six to zero. That brings us to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments.
Frank Jeff Arato, these are my opinions. Regarding Lighthouse Park, Mr. Frazier said the money's going toward the park, not the museum, and that the road is eroding. No one suggested we not repave the road. Where then is the money coming from for the nine maritime spaces? If it's part of the million dollars, Mr. Frazier's wrong, like his response that my review is never blocked. I'm fighting for people on Champion Street, for our visitors, for drivers, for children yet to be born, and even for these commissioners, whether they know it or not. I've acted selflessly, yet this board loves making me out to be selfish, all part of the deceit that pervades us. On parcel two, Mr. Stonehouse assured us there'd be plenty of time for public input and sensitivity would be used, only to learn the architect will maximize the existing ordinances, which, from what we've seen, are not sensitive. His promise about public input was broken when five members approved two developments without letting us see the requested renderings in either of two agenda packets. It makes us wonder where the cement will come from, perhaps the same place as the owner at 340 East Ridge. Not only did Mr. Frazier motion to approve parcel two, knowing we'd had no effective chance to comment, but also a project for an excavator that he assumingly follows around with a cement truck. No wonder why we call it flounders. After this board floundered for 12 years, only to discard untold hours of public input for the sake of one man, the result is there for all to see. Mr. Schlegel contradicted himself when he said, quote, "trying to visualize the plan," and that it was done 100% properly. If it were done 10% proper, we'd have seen the requested drawings, thus we could have visualized for sure, instead of tried to visualize. And he was on the planning board. If he couldn't fully visualize, none could. Of course, that didn't matter because the appellant was a who's who. That's all that mattered. A done deal, as another citizen put it. This board doesn't like us calling it flounders, yet they bungled again on every building down there except arguably the Hampton Inn. Don't blame me for reporting what hundreds of people think. These members need to realize that any lie told here is a lie against everyone in town. Our public is dead sick of the lies. Mr. Stonehouse presides over a small UP city. He lacks the authority to enforce his own laws. He's liable because our record shows I was denied the full three minutes, having committed no violation, even according to his own attorney. Anyone who's tired of how this board operates can remain anonymous by having his slash her attorney contact me. We'll proceed only if the people have a clear cake, clear-cut case on the alleged breach of public process or any potential conflicts of interest.
Anyone else who addressed the commission? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Commissioners, Mr. Smith, would you start, please?
I don't have a whole lot. We had a work session last week about marijuana, so I was wondering if we know around about when that second work session will be. I've been getting questions from the public on that month or, not in a month. Do we have a month?
I don't set them, but maybe...
No, but I'm looking at you, Ron, because you're usually...
I think the rules are coming out in June. I would think another work session in June, maybe later in June would be appropriate time, because we'll have, we should have the emergency rules to look at at that time.
Thanks for the update on that. Yeah, that's all I had this week. Thank you.
Mr. Schlegel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to kind of recap a lot of the fun stuff tonight, the junior hockey 12 under group, I love to see these guys come in and talk about, what was the record?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two and three, and, and who cares?
Five.
Fifty-two wins, only three losses. I mean, you see them coming, get out the way. That is something else. The, the police accreditation, the Carp River Kiln project, the topics on the consent agenda, lots of great stuff happened in here in the city of Marquette. Very excited for it. I normally don't give you the time of day on when you come after me there, but I'm going to do it tonight, Frank, just because I want to, it was a couple minutes ago, and, and you know, you're saying that I'm contradicting or I'm, you know, relying about things. And just because it, I didn't, you know, I'm not sure exactly how you worded it, but properly, when I say it was done properly, it means that it fits within the parameters set forth...
when I say it was done properly, it means that it fits within the parameters set forth by the city of Marquette and the, the city planning commission. Okay? Do you understand that? It'd be good to, it'd be good to go back and maybe revisit those rules. Might help you out a little bit in the future, instead of making yourself look silly. It's a lot of fun to be a part of meetings when all of these great things are happening in our community. And I look forward to a great summer. Be careful out there. The kids are running around, lots of mopeds, lots of action in the parks, and please be, be aware of your surroundings. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Um, I don't have anything further to add. I think Commissioner Schlegel said it best of all the wonderful things we have going on in the community and the things this evening with the young hockey team and the police accreditation. I thank you for pointing all those wonderful things out and all the great things we have going on in Marquette, and that is all I have.
Mr. Frazier?
There's more great projects ahead. Congrats to the hockey team. Maybe the two chiefs could get together with them, you know, Reball or Mr. Davis could get together and get some advice on how to make your teams better. I mean, if they went, they had such a great record, maybe one of your teachers, they could help your, your teams out with better records if your big's a neat game. You never know, could happen. I mean, I didn't play hockey at all, so I, I wouldn't have a clue. Although my daughter plays soccer, and I played soccer a lot when I was younger. And I tried to challenge her coach once to a little challenge, and she ran around me like I was standing still. So I'm nowhere near where I used to be. Sure say problem, but there's stuff going on. And if you're proud with the way the city handles stuff, one way to fix it is run for city commission. I mean, you're welcome to run. Anybody, anybody that's a city citizen can run. If you're elected, then you can make a difference. That's all you have to do. I mean, and if you make a difference, you can talk to everybody, make your opinions heard, and discuss things very well. It's very, and, you know, to complain about stuff that's happened, I mean, we get upset with flounders landing. It was called founders landing for a reason because our founders helped start Marquette. I mean, people think mines, but one of my family members, Peter White, was a founder. And I don't like hearing flounders because founders isn't part of the market. Without the founders, we wouldn't be here. And if you're complaining about founders landing, then maybe you find a missed place to live, you know? And yes, you're, they said, maybe it's a back, the championship might not have blocked. Who knows? Development changes everywhere. The other way, there's a certain person that comments about that stuff, would you be changed if there'd be a, a 30-story building built in Melon-Madsen Park? That's the only way it'd happen. I mean, Madsen Park, there's pictures to prove it. Used to be a big industrial site. All of Lower Harbor's been industrial site. It was ever pretty. Railroad running all the way through, everybody railroad. I remember founders landing being a railroad yard, railroad going up and down the sidewalk, where the sidewalk goes to rail yard. I remember all that. And coal everywhere, and remember that stuff. And then, you know, so again, if you care about the city, come to city meetings and voice your comment. But don't forget, there's other stuff going on in the city too. Certain people I see come and comment a lot, we never say on our work sessions. We have a lot of work sessions in the city. It's all on the city website and talks about everything that's going on. Our work session is where a lot of stuff gets talked about, and we just, and we decide, and we think about stuff, and we discuss things. We don't make any decisions, we just discuss things. So if you want to learn more about what the city does, come to one of our work sessions. They're available all the time.
Mr. Hill?
Thank you. Two things. I want to call out this conversation about candidates and being able to have influence on city projects, particularly the infrastructure projects. The question was raised today. One is, as was brought up, the League of Women Voters has a website called vote411.org, where you can learn more about the candidates. Very important way to learn what folks are hoping for, their values, their experience. And that's a great way to understand who you, people often say they don't know who to vote for, particularly at the local level. That's a really important way to get that information. And the, glad to hear that a candidate forum's been scheduled for July 17th. Wants to say that one more time. And then on another note of the, the return of spring finally here in the city, it was posted on the UP bird list that this Sunday, a piping plover, which is a very endangered bird, which we almost killed off, was actually seen at the mouth of the Dead River for about half the day. It's very exciting news that they were right here in town. And, and there's, it's a sign of the health of Lake Superior and that we want to keep that lake healthy. And thanks to all the folks who are helping make that happen. And we will see you again the day after Memorial Day, let the summer begin.
Thank you. A couple of, of quick hits if I can. One of them is just to remind Mr. Verto that we do have commission rules of behavior. And if we're looking at item five or section five, paragraph C, addressing the commission, the speaker shall address all remarks to the mayor in a courteous tone. And I think that's important that we have that for public decorum and all discussion. I think the commission works, though we may disagree with issues, we are extremely courteous with one another and considerate of the other viewpoint. And that is the reason that we have it in the commission rules, is to be able to enforce and to request, if you will, the same consideration from the public when speaking to the commission. If you haven't had a chance to be in city hall in the last couple of days, you really should. Take a walk through it, look at the halls, look at the tremendous art that's been put up by the city of Marquette Arts Center. It is, is really just stellar. And of course, the plan is that that will be rotational. It'll be up for a while, and they'll rotate it out to bring some other art in. Right now, it's, it's particularly flat imagery, it's paintings, but they are, again, well worth your time to stop by city hall, take a look at it. Kudos to the police department for accreditation. It's nice to see the city leading the state again or being among the leaders and getting this done. It really gives you confidence, I think, in our local police on a number of, of, of levels. But just their professionalism, what they do and how they serve our citizens, I think it's, again, certainly remarkable. Lighthouse Point construction started today, so there's a lot of activity going on down around the lighthouse, the old Coast Guard Station. That'll be going on for most of the summer, I think, to get that project completed. But the roads, I think, are still open. The opportunity to go out and take a look at it's still there, so it's not shut off by, from the public by any means. I commend the League of Voters, League of Women Voters, rather, for scheduling the candidate forum. It's been a real tradition that we've had now for about three or four times, I think. And it was, it was missed when they were gone. And it's, it's good to see them back in full flower, full form anyway. And I think everybody should be here to see that and get a good glimpse of what the candidates are standing for, what their issues are, and how they could best represent us and why they should be elected. Nothing further. City manager, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you commissioners for your actions tonight. And just one comment. And for the May 28th commission meeting, I plan to bring the, the contracts for the Lower Harbor pilings back to the commission for approval. For, for you and for the general public knowledge, I would like to schedule a work session sometime prior to that meeting, the week prior preferably. I put on the list of possible dates, four o'clock prior to that meeting, but I know that's not always the best time to have a work session. But I'd like to inform the public and the commission that we are having a work session related to that decision, where we will present to the commission the information that we have regarding the, the plans to move forward with those pilings and whatever information the contractors can provide. So hopefully to well inform you before you're asked to make that decision. That's all I have. Thank you.